Thank you, Georgette. Thank you, Georgette. Good evening. I'm Lester Barclay, Chairman of the Chicago Transit Board. Welcome and thank you for participating in our annual public hearing on the CTA's proposed budget. I would like to introduce the other board members in attendance today, both in person and remotely. Seated with me are board members Johnny Miller and Rosa Ortiz. Online, we have Vice Chair Bernard Jakes and Director Michelle Lee. Also joining us in attendance in person tonight is CTA President Dorval Carter and Deputy General Counsel Brad Chance. Before we proceed with the hearing, I want to take a moment to acknowledge that this is Veterans Day. Veterans of our country have served very well, and we want to salute them this weekend. I'd like to especially recognize the veterans who work for CTA in a variety of roles. CTA has long promoted the hiring of veterans. And as we recognize the tremendous value and experience of military veterans that military veterans bring to public transportation, we just want to express our gratitude for their service. We will now begin the public hearing. Before we open the hearing up to hear from the public, we will first have a brief, brief presentation on the 2024 proposed budget by our Chief Financial Officer, Jeremy Fine. Jeremy?
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Jeremy Fine, your Chief Financial Officer here at CTA. And I'll provide a brief overview of the 2024 budget. On the first slide, there's the highlights for the 2024 budget. And we're presenting a 1.996 billion. On the next slide, please. We're presenting a $1.996 billion operating budget and a $3.6 billion five-year capital budget. The budget assumes no fare increases. And as the budget is built on 2019 service levels, this allows service to be added as operator headcount grows to pre-pandemic levels. And however, the CTA faces the same headwinds that most industries face nationwide. Despite those headwinds, CTA has made significant progress in hiring and training in 2023. And these efforts will continue to increase in 2024 as we focus on increasing our service levels throughout the year. Ridership continues to grow as we emerge from the pandemic. And the 24 budget projects ridership will grow 9.9% over the 23 budget. This represents a retention rate of 63.4% compared to 2019 levels. The 2024 budget requires the use of 473 million of the remaining 1 billion of federal relief funding. And 481 million will remain at the end of 2024, which should carry us into late 2025. Our projections for '25 and '26 show a remaining gap of 50 million for 2025 and 577 million in 2026. The budget also makes key investments in CTA's strategic initiatives. As I previously mentioned, the budget provides the ability to increase service to 2019 levels as additional hiring and training occurs throughout the year. The 24 budget also continues to make investments in safety and security efforts through both operating and capital budgets. The budget also invests in partnership with CDOT on bus priority zones, the CTA's ASAP program, the Forest Park rebuild, the novation to the zero emission fleet, and other programs. We also continue to invest in improvements on our bus and train trackers, real-time platform crowding conditions, and a new chatbot service. Including in the budget is efforts to retain and hire employees. And this has been especially important in a very difficult hiring market. The 24 budget allows us to continue these efforts to close the workforce shortages in order to get back to these 2019 service levels, as I previously mentioned. We will also continue to work with other governmental agencies and social service agencies to expand our fare programs, including providing preloaded venture fare cards for victims and survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault, and to further integrate fares with Metra and PACE. On the next page, we have an overview, 2020 operating budget revenues. This receipt is from two primary sources, system-generated revenues and public funding. Since the start of the pandemic, we've received federal relief funding, but those funds are finite. System-generated revenues are revenues generated by the CTA, primarily fare revenue. But we include reduced fare reimbursements and other revenue. And this accounts about 21% of our operating revenues currently. And pre-pandemic, this was closer to approximately 50%. Thank you. For 2024, we're also expecting system-generated revenues of about 427.4 million or an increase of 8.6% compared to the '23 budget. Public funding is revenue that we receive from the RTA and includes sales tax, real estate transfer tax, revenues from the city of Chicago, and public transportation funds, which is a state match on sales tax and RET revenues. These total 1.1 billion for the '24 budget and account for approximately 55% of the total operating revenues. Public funding is expected to increase 5% as compared to the 2023 budget. The federal relief funding makes up the balance of the '24 operating revenues, and we plan to use 472.5 million of relief funds, which is 24% of the overall revenues. And as I mentioned, the relief funding is finite, and we expect to exhaust the funds in late 2025. And this will require us to seek additional funding for going forward. With regard to our expenses, CTA's operating expenses are expected to increase 9.2% in 2024 as compared to the 2023 budget. And our operating expenses fall into seven major categories. The largest operating expense is labor, which accounts for approximately 68% of the total expenses. The labor budget is 1.36 billion of the 1.996 billion total budget. The other operating expense lines consist of materials, security services, fuel, power, and provisions for injuries and damages and other expenses, which includes contracts, debt service payments, utilities, and the like. I would also note that our expenses for security services have increased significantly since the pandemic. And in 2019, we spent about 14 million on security services, and for 2024, we're budgeting 65 million. While expenses have increased, CTA has implemented a number of cost-saving measures and non-fairbox revenues that have totaled approximately $1 billion since 2015. On the next page is an overview of the 2024 to 2028 capital improvement program. You can flip the slide. Thank you. In the 2024, CIP is 3.6 billion. The largest revenue source for capital projects is federal funds, followed by the state motor fuel tax revenues, CTA bonds, and the discretionary grant programs. Discretionary grant funds are competitive grants for which CTA receives special projects based on federal funds, federal funding offered. For example, we compete nationally for bus, including e-bus, and railcar replacements, the All Stations Accessibility Program, and other opportunities, and will continue to look for seeking of funding that is available for new opportunities as we continue to progress. The CIP will continue to fund major projects, including the Red Line Extension, All Stations Accessibility, Bus System Electrification, and the Bus and Rail Fleet Modernization. This concludes my presentation, and I'm thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeremy Fine. And I believe now we are going to proceed with our public comments. We do have some public commenters who are joining us by phone. And I am going to ask Jeremy to please queue up the first one. And I will say, as he is queuing them up, to all of our public commenters, we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes while your comments, we ask also that your comments not be derogatory or defamatory or incendiary. But in the spirit of all of us, in the spirit of good citizenship, it's our intention on this evening to allow everyone a voice. So just they could just please be, if you could please be cognizant of that. Is our first caller up?
Yes, our first caller is Anna Maria Montez.
Anna Maria Montez, you have three minutes.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Anna Maria Montez de Oca Rojas, Director of Workforce Development for Hires v. 60. And what I could say is that I am very excited about the partnership that we have created with the CTA to be able to bring more opportunities for the community, you know, on these projects that actually are happening throughout the city of Chicago.
Thank you very much. Jeremy, our next phone commenter?
Yeah. Our next commenter is Jamie Neely.
Jamie Neely, you have three minutes.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome. Good evening, everyone, and thank you all. Thank you to the Chicago Transit Authority and the CTA Diversity Programs Department. Hello, my name is Jamie Neely, the Executive Director of the Federation of Women Contractors, a 34-year-old membership organization advocating for women-owned construction companies in Illinois. Our 100-plus women-owned members are majority established, mostly signatory, and many are DBE's doing business with the CTA and transportation agencies alike. And on behalf of the FWC, I am privileged to sit on the CTA DBA Advisory Council and was a part of the inaugural Workforce Subcommittee, which is now its very own functioning committee. Through these experiences and capacities, I get to work with many of city, county, and state agencies. However, I have experienced firsthand CTA's unwavering commitment to diversity. The CTA diversity team is always responsive to the needs of the DBE and small business community. They continue to help break down barriers and extend inclusive opportunities. For instance, slow pay continues to plague our industry and negatively impacts our small businesses. Well, CTA has responded with an internal audit to understand and analyze each step of the process to better feel to better fill the gaps and untie the snags. The diversity team provided transparency reporting so that all parties on notice can contribute to the betterment of the process. This has resulted in improving payment times and attracting more vendors to the CTA vendor pool. Other gestures of business support include unbundling packages to right-size opportunities for small and scaling businesses. The Mentor Protege Program, that again allows the support to DBE's and SPE's to organically and gradually do business with CTA. CTA continues to be proactive, very well reactive to many outreach opportunities and informing the business community. And lastly, the Business Development and Technical Assistance Program, such as the Building Small Businesses, which helps firms secure capital, is just another example of CTA's investment to supporting small and diverse businesses. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that Juan Pablo Pareto and the CTA diversity team quickly respond to every FWC asked, request, and inquiry. And for all of those reasons and many more, we appreciate the continued support, advocacy, and effort to support of the small, to small women construction-related firms. I thank you again, and this is Jamie Neely with the Federation of Women Contractors. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next commenter, Jeremy.
Our next commenter is Larissa Lopez.
Ms. Lopez?
Ms. Lopez, if you can hear me, don't forget to press star six to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, and you may begin.
Thank you. Good evening, Directors, Chairman Barkley, and esteemed individuals present. Yep. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you just fine. Please continue.
Ah, thank you. My name is Larissa, and I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to connect with you today. With 22 years of entrepreneurial experience, I have dedicated myself to managing a business that consistently delivers high-quality services to our clients. I am a small business owner, and the name of my business is Purple Group. But I wanted to share that despite our high capabilities and the capacity to handle lots of projects and large-scale projects and responding to numerous RFP opportunities, we did not secure the type of contract that can truly transform a small business until we responded to an RFP issued by the CTA's Diversity Supplier Program, and more specifically, the Red-Purple Modernization Project Phase One. President Dorbel Carter emphasizes, many times that I've heard him speak, he emphasizes being intentional about creating opportunities for diverse suppliers. I'm, I can say that that is genuine. My business has experienced that transformative growth that in the impact of CTA's Diversity Supplier Program to the Red-Purple Modernization Project. I think the previous presenter also talked about how genuine this is, the CTA and the individuals that work there. I want it, it's November, I wanted to publicly extend my deepest gratitude for the deliberate efforts driving the CTA Supplier Diversity Program. This initiative has not only fostered growth for my business, but it has increasingly and significantly accelerated our success as it has allowed us to demonstrate our capabilities and has allowed us to actually go after other businesses. And we have closed other large-scale projects and contracts. Simply because the CTA gave us that opportunity, we've been able to work with other large-scale projects and just as effective. Again, I want to express my gratitude and appreciation, and I want to encourage the CTA to continue its hard work associated with creating tangible opportunities for diverse suppliers, particularly small businesses. Sometimes, frankly, we just don't get a chance. Maybe they think we're too small to perform, or maybe we don't have the capabilities, but we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy, our next caller.
Our next caller is Sean Harris.
Sean Harris. Please begin your comment.
Sean, if you can hear me, don't forget to press star six to unmute yourself.
Sean Harris, are you there?
I am here.
You have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, thank you. All right, hello, everyone. My name is Sean Harris. I am the president and owner of Lobwire Construction. Business, we've been in business for about 17 years now, a black-owned business. And I'm also the founding president of Black Contractors Owners and Executives organization that was started about seven years ago to help black-owned contractors share best practices, work together, and help to navigate each other through this Chicagoland construction arena, which can be extremely difficult. I'm also a member of the DBE Advisory Committee for several years now. Happy to be a part of this committee because I can tell you from a black contractor's perspective and representing black contractors throughout Chicago, this, this committee is serious and it's intentional about the success of black and brown and women-owned contractors in construction. I mean, at this point, it's even expanded to, to building workforce, workforce advisory board that will definitely be, has been needed, and allowing the other workforce agencies now to have a table where the typically the, the DBE contractors have had this table to come to and express their concerns and, and challenges. Now the workforce development community has the same table that the DBE contractors have had, which is a fantastic thing because one cannot be great without the other. All of our contractors need great workers. So it's fantastic that the CTA and the DBE Committee, you know, launched this. But just to really kind of wrap up my, my comments, it's very important that this committee and Juan Pablo and his staff, you know, continue to be supported heavily because the city of Chicago residents and the city of Chicago business community at large does not have a platform like this particular board does, this committee does, that shares the diverse group of stakeholders' opinions where we can actually sit down together and flush out strategy and ideas about how to make this city better through working on CTA projects. The CTA has some of the most robust projects in the city of Chicago. Therefore, I believe it recognizes that it has a responsibility to the community as well as to the constituents and, and the city of Chicago residents as a whole to make sure that they set an example of what diversity and inclusion looks like.
Okay, please wrap your comments up.
Yes. So with that being said, that is my comment. I appreciate you all taking the time to do this, and I look forward to many more years of this continued support where we can continue to voice our concerns and make a difference for the community as a whole.
Thank you. Jeremy, our next caller.
Our next caller is Julia Gerasimenko.
Julia Gerasimenko, are you there?
Julia, if you can hear me, don't forget to press star six. There you go.
Can you hear me?
You have three minutes.
Wonderful. Good evening, CTA Board and President Carter. My name is Julia Gerasimenko, and I am an Advocacy Manager at the Active Transportation Alliance. I've lived in Chicago for 11 years, and for the past six years, I've been working with the Active Transportation Alliance to create a Chicago where everyone has equitable, accessible, reliable, and safe ways to get around regardless of their identity, ability, neighborhood, or economic status. I represent over 650 members of ours who have taken action since Tuesday to support the following message to you regarding the proposed 2024 budget. So I'm here to advocate and express some concerns and urge you all to take immediate action to address the service cuts, the lack of adequate rail operator, operator training capacity, as well as lack of inter-agency collaborative capacity and investment in public engagement that we see in the proposed 2024 budget. As transit agencies in New York, DC, and Seattle return to pre-pandemic service levels, one of our fellow kind of activist groups, commuters take action, have found that CTA has reduced rail service by 24% and bus service 13% since the pandemic. Additionally, CMAP data shows a staggering 29% reduction in CTA bus service since 2007. Metro and PACE have shown commitment to improvement by increasing service this year, yet CTA leadership has not outlined a plan for returning to 2019 service in 2024 or even 2025. We urge you to outline a concrete plan for returning service ASAP in this budget. Our push for 10 rail operator training classes is critical. With the capacity to train a maximum of 120 rail operators annually and an actual figure of just 40 this year, we are falling behind. Attrition rates are not matched by new operator training resulting in a significant deficit. We urgently need an increase in capacity to train 300 rail operators a year and a renewal of sign-on bonuses for bus operators to enhance service as soon as possible. We firmly believe that investing in transit operators, the members of ATU 241 and 308 who move Chicagoans every day, is also investing in transit riders. There's also a vicious cycle at play where lower fare revenues have led to a reduced operations budget, causing further cuts in service. We know this leaves the agency in between a rock and hard place, as they say. This cycle is detrimental to regaining ridership and avoiding the looming fiscal cliff. We need a bold vision and investment to reverse this trend. There is a new report surmounting the fiscal cliff by the Urban Institute. The authors are Yona Freemark and Lindy Way Renner that speak to identifying stable funding solutions for transit systems across the US. The top two recommendations they have are identifying ways to increase transit service to encourage additional ridership. And even though more ridership is unlikely to generate substantial fare revenue increases in the short term, it can help build political support for more investment in transit. Also, they call for increasing operational efficiency, not by reducing workforce or service, but by investing in improvements that speed operations and reduce energy costs, such as dedicated bus lanes. With the Illinois General Assembly Session approaching in 2024, it's paramount that the CTA demonstrates its commitment to sure, demonstrates its commitment to improving service levels. This will be essential in seeking new revenue streams to avoid fiscal disaster. We stand ready to support CTA's efforts for additional funding with the commitment that those funds be used to prioritize investing in restoring pre-pandemic levels of service. Thanks so much for your time and attention to this critical matter.
Thank you. Jeremy, our next caller.
Our next caller is Garland Armstrong.
Garland Armstrong, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Georgette. This is Garland Armstrong, formerly of Displayz Illinois, now living in Des Moines, Iowa. And I want to give kudos to the CTA for their, for your budget 2024, no fare increases, and also making sure to get more riders, especially for, especially for those, the low-income and people with disabilities, and making sure that they get the understanding and communication for CTA. But my biggest question is, like for the electric buses, if the, if the manufacturers have going, file for bankruptcy, will CTA work with RTA to make sure if the manufacturers for the electric accessible buses will file for bankruptcy? Can you find out who it is going to be? And do you have a backup plan to make sure that the manufacturers will get more accessible electric buses? Because everyone in the, everyone in the Chicagoland area says we need more accessible buses. But if they file for bankruptcy, does CTA have a backup plan to, extreme backup plan to make sure that the accessible electric buses won't go into bankruptcy? And people will be asking, hey, where's the electric accessible buses? So my biggest concern is about that. So if CTA will work with RTA and have an extreme backup plan on it? So that is my biggest concern about that down the road and making sure that the community gets together for 2024. So with PACE and METRA to make sure that the fiscal cliff won't be happening. And I'll be glad to answer any questions or comments from the directors while I'm still here, if they have any, if they have their opinions on it or concerns about it.
No, no questions this evening, Garland, but thank you so much for your call.
Thank you, and keep up the good work, CTA.
Thank you, Garland. Jeremy, our next caller.
Our next caller is Kyle Easter.
Good evening, Kyle Easter. You have three minutes.
Hello?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Oh, yes. I just wanted to say the leadership needs to be fired. We need to run more train operator classes to get service back to normal. DC is similarly sized much priority has.
Thank you, Kyle Easter. Jeremy, our next caller.
Welcome. Thank you.
That was the last of the Darwin commenters that are currently in my queue.
Great. Thank you very much, Jeremy. So now we are going to move on to the in-person public commenter portion of our evening. We do have individuals who signed up online and whose information we received over the last seven to 10 days. Thank you so much for coming out tonight. We will reiterate that everyone has three minutes, and we will start with Keanu Gattler.
Good evening. My name is Keanu Gattler, organizer of commuters take action. To start with, do I need to point out the irony that people were late because of car traffic? Someone lost a train, and we weren't timed. Thank you. Even after today's announcement of added service, the CTA rail service is still down 21% since 2019. The CTA of today has fewer rail operators than it did a year ago. President Carter is eager of excuses and is claiming that other cities have managed to restore their, haven't managed to restore their service, but it's untrue. DC, New York City, and all are running more service. Please don't try to, please don't try to dispute that. The CTA today claims to be innovative, but there haven't been any improvements to the rail operator hiring process. Why can't we get more than six classes a year? We're talking about the ability to hire just over 100 people on a $2 billion budget. $2 billion, and we just need to hire 100 people. The future of this agency, and I would say the future of the city, now rests on the ability to hire and train just over 100 people. We need a plan to do this, but this is missing from the budget. Looking at the budget, the, it includes numbers about bus and operator headcount, bus operator headcount, but this is not including such numbers for rail. I think this agency's art of picking and choosing what statistics it shares with us is too reminiscent of what you'd find in a Soviet newspaper. Over the past year, President Carter has been adamant that he's not cutting service, but optimizing it. Last month, he told us that he doesn't advertise optimizations as cuts because as cuts, because once the CTA starts adding back service to pre-pandemic levels, he'll also call that optimization. But then we look at the first paragraph of the budget, and it tells us that we're adding service. We can't have it both ways. If you want to take the wins for adding service, you gotta take the losses too. We all want more service, but we also want honest ridership. On another note, station renovation project by the CTA continued to miss the mark on passenger comfort. In 2023, uh, major work was done at UIC and Rastin Blue Line stations, but the improvements keep the rider experience second-class. Accessibility improvements are important, but much, much more should be done. The American Lung Association concluded that living within one-fifth of a mile from a busy road has drastic effects on child asthma and life expectancy. So why are we okay with having riders wait within yards of exhaust from thousands of vehicles? We can't, uh, we can't undo the mistakes of the past of building a rail line in the station medians, but we can, we can lessen the pain. Why can't we build, upgrade these stations to have protective walls and wider platforms so passengers can wait in comfort? And lastly, I'm looking forward to the upcoming 9,000 series rail cars, but I hope that this time the CTA can dream big instead of marginal improvements that we got with the 7,000 series. If you want to have a world-class transit system, we need to see things like open gangways, more doors per car, sliding plug doors, and automatic train operation. The 7,000 series is essentially a facelift of a 50-year-old design. If you want a good train, we need to start with a clean sheet design. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gottlieb. Our next in-person public commenter is Jason Craston. Jason?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jason Crastens. I represent the Chicago Democratic Socialists of America, Fix the CTA Campaign. I'm here tonight to talk about a major change that I think needs to happen on the CTA, the reintroduction of conductors and two-person crews on all CTA train lines. The current CTA, as we all know, is an essential lifeline to hard-working Chicagoans all across this great city. Sadly, it's also an environment in which employees need to work long hours in potentially unsafe conditions, where physical assaults are common, including one that happened literally this Saturday, and where rules too often go ignored while you're taking the trains. A real professional and permanent solution is needed in order to address this crisis. I am here today to tell you that reintroducing conductors on all trains and lines is a solution that riders and employees of the CTA need and deserve. Reintroducing the system will dramatically help with addressing security concerns for both employees and riders. Not only this, but they will also improve general service and quality of life for riders and employees by answering questions, mediating conflicts, and helping people get, experiencing crises, get the services that they need. The current system of the CTA, where $119 million has been spent on private security contracts, have not made myself, my partner, or any of my friends feel safer or more supported on CTA transit systems. Unlike the friendly, uh, unlike the friendly and welcoming presence that a conductor would provide, sites like security guards at every gate with muzzled attack dogs meant to intimidate does not make me feel safe. It makes me feel like the current system is designed to provide a thin veneer of bombastic but empty threats, rather than a real, professional, and respectable solution to one of the largest problems faced by CTA employees and riders. What would make me, my partner, and all of my friends feel safer taking transit is a clean, professional, and well-trained corps of conductors. These people would, without a doubt, go much further towards making the CTA trains much safer, welcoming, and friendly places to travel. On top of this, they would also act as excellent ambassadors of not just the CTA, but our beautiful, hard-working city itself. Going far to improve the image of Chicago as a great place to work and live. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Craston. I would be remiss if, but I did not add at this time that we have received a number of written comments. Those written comments have been, we've made copies of them and given them to all of the board members. We also have been allowing for individuals who came this evening but did not preregister online to sign up to speak downstairs, and we have four minutes left. So if you are here and you have gotten inspired and you are not on our public comment roster, you have four minutes to go downstairs and sign up to speak. Our next speaker is Soleil Smith.
Hey, uh, I'm Soleil Smith. Um, I'm also a member of the Chicago Democratic Socialists of America, Fix the CTA Campaign. Uh, I also feel like it's important to mention that I also depend on the CTA as a resident of Rogers Park that has to travel to UIC every day of the week to receive my education and also teach my undergrads who themselves rely on both the CTA, PACE, and METRA. Um, I appreciate you all having us here. I'll try to keep it brief. Um, I want to first applaud you all for refusing to raise fares and keeping our transit, in order to keep our transit system afloat. Um, however, I want to see the budget go further to not only protect riders, but also protect the workers on the CTA that keep our system functioning. In just under a month, um, the contracts for ATU Locals 308 and 241 are both going to expire. And in that time, um, our, um, 9% increase in the transit system budget needs to make sure that we can have a generous contract between the workers that keep our system moving and the CTA itself. Um, that means having better protections and benefits for all CTA employees, regardless of their level or where they're working in the system, ensuring that they have access to things like sick leave, uh, making sure they have better protection from both equipment, management, and also the public, uh, because it isn't enough to just say that we want to expand service without saying how. Um, and we can, we have already done this over the last year. We can try and hire as many people as we want, but as long as the system remains unsafe, undignifying, and unsupportive of the workers that are with us on the CTA, then we're going to lose more than we gain. Um, I wanted to say that I've worked in warehouses and I've worked in schools, and I don't think that I've ever experienced the kinds of working conditions that y'all put CTA workers through, where they're having their water, um, their like clean water that they can drink and like wash hands with, shut off for a week, especially at like a facility where mechanics are working and working with chemicals. Um, I've also never been forced to use the restroom outside or have to rely on public businesses to let me in to use the restroom, um, unlike our bus drivers. Uh, this is something that really only happens at the CTA, and I think that that's unacceptable, especially for our exceptional transit system. Um, so if we want to fix our riding conditions, we have to make sure that we're fixing our working conditions on the CTA. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next in-person public commenter is Michael Crow.
My name is Michael Crow, and I'm a resident of Evanston and regular transit rider. I would say I'm a regular CTA rider, but the reliability of both CTA buses and the Purple Line that serve the Evanston area have made me avoid using it, uh, whenever possible and taking PACE or METRA instead. The CTA buses that serve, uh, the Evanston area leave a lot to be desired, only having 20-minute headways at best, have any extremely reduced Saturday schedule and no Sunday schedule. Of course, this is assuming the buses stick to their schedule. It's very common that the Bus Route 93 will have buses stacked right behind each other. This turns 20-minute headways into 40-minute headways that will last through the rest of the day until the buses get to the garage. This isn't the longest headway you'll have waiting for the CTA at Davis Station. It's become a daily occurrence that the Purple Line will see a headway or multiple of up to 30 to 50 minutes, uh, due to only, only running 70% of the trains on the already cut-down schedule. I personally have experienced a headway of 42 minutes midday on a weekday, which caused over 100 people to be stuck waiting at Howard as a train, as train after train from the Red Line kept dropping people off expecting a quick and easy transfer onto the Purple Line. These headways are worse than you will find on the Metro Union Pacific North Line, right across the street, and at least that gets you to downtown twice as fast. These occurrences have made me completely lose trust in the CTA and actively using it whenever, and avoiding it whenever possible. If I need to get around town, I'll choose PACE bus instead of CTA buses. If I need to get downtown, I'll take the UP North instead of the Purple Line. Even if I have to use the Red Line, I would rather take the Pace Pulse Dempster Line to the Skokie Swift than directly from the Purple Line, because at least I know a train will show up. Uh, it is clear that CTA is not afraid to give Evanston the short end of the stick when it comes to Alkane Resources. I understand that Evanston is not exactly Chicago, but it is still an area that the CTA has committed to serving. Even with the new L schedules announced today, it has done nothing to help the struggling Purple Line. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crow. Our, our next in-person public speaker is Brandon McFadden.
Good evening. My name is Brandon McFadden, an organizer with commuters take action, a local collective of riders advocating for better transit. I'm here tonight to talk about the lack of information within the budget provided by the agency and President Dorval Carter regarding the rail operator hiring pipeline. In the president's report, President Carter referenced his plans for increases in bus and rail services. While this is a welcome change, I find it fascinating. The CTA has told the public countless times to this day that it never cut or reduced service. What the CTA didn't tell us is that even on the best days, the agency only ran 65% of that unchanged schedule, leaving those essential Chicago workers stranded on hot summer days and cold winter nights. What the agency did tell us is that they made schedule optimizations. I don't know about you guys, but when I hear the word optimization, I envision sleek, efficient, and well-oiled machinery. But every time I look at the agency's system performance, it seems that optimization is just a facade. The agency's on-time performance has only increased marginally. Hiding the numerator and changing the denominator does not make for a good statistic. The root of these problems is a shortage of available workforce. No one objects to that. Although the CTA has changed their stance numerous times on this, from a nationwide to an industry-wide to a regional problem, all of that is dwarfed by a localized training pipeline issue. For some background, there's no direct entry way to, for a rail, for someone to become a rail operator at the CTA. You must first enter the workforce as a flagger, someone who works on the right-of-way during periods of track work. This position must then qualify as a rapid transit operator within 12 months. Due to this, the CTA is artificially limiting their pool of potential rail operator candidates right out of the gate. On top of that, the CTA historically limited RTO training classes to just 12 people, until quite recently when class sizes were increased to 20. The CTA then hosts six of these RTO classes per year, meaning even if every trainee graduates from training, a maximum of 120 RTOs can enter the workforce. Of those 120, 10 to 15% will fulfill roles outside of train operation. According to reports produced by the CTA, the agency lost more than 120 in just four months this year. Every advocate is pleading that the CTA take immediate action and stop accepting these subpar training class sizes and frequencies from the Vice President of Training and Workforce Development. It's time for the CTA to increase the class size maximum to 30 and frequency to 10 per year. If the CTA wants to return to its status of being a world-class transit agency, it's time to act like it. So if Dorval Carter can't come up with that plan, it's time to find someone who can. Other agencies have accomplished this. It's well past your turn. If the CTA is not able to prioritize an increase in class size and frequency, I see no way for anyone to support approval of this budget, and we will ensure the RTA understands that. I just want my journeys on, on transit in my hometown, our beautiful city of Chicago, to be seamless, just as they are with other agencies around the United States and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McFadden. Our next public commenter is Jose Almanza.
Everybody, thank you. My name is Jose Manuel Almanza, and I'm the Director of Advocacy for Equitacity. We are a transportation advocacy organization in the west side of Chicago. I don't want to repeat what other people have been saying, but something that's important that I saw in the budget was a sharp increase in security and safety. Um, and that's worrisome because what the President Dorval Carter and the CTA sees as public safety in the transit system, what they showed us is we don't need attack dogs. We don't need a private security that isn't trained to deal with the type of things that happen in the, in the, in the CTA transit system. Um, what we do need is increasing ridership by reducing the wait time. If people, uh, know exactly when the bus and train is going to get to their, to their stop and exactly when they're going to get to their destination without having to wait 20, 30, 40, 50. Yes, I've talked to community members that have waited over an hour, uh, for the bus to come in there and in, on the area in a shelter, in a shelterless bus stop. All of that, uh, makes people feel unsafe. So reducing wait times is very important. Secondly, staffing all the stations, having, uh, conductors, and more importantly, ambassadors that are going to respond to the type of scenarios that don't require armed security or armed officers, reducing the number of rider interactions with police gives officers more time to do their jobs and less opportunity for unnecessary escalation. Expanding the free fares, so increasing the eligibility threshold for, uh, people to access discounted transit can reduce instances of fare evasion, which would help more riders access public transit and reduce unnecessary interactions with the police. Uh, and last, and I know this is not a direct, in the scope of work for the CTA, however, funding better housing options, so advocating for that, working with city agencies to make sure that people experiencing homelessness don't rely on the CTA, on the Red Line and Blue Line, uh, when it's hot or when it's cold out here in Chicago. And we're in a unique position where we have a mayor who's championing the policy of treatment not trauma, which creates a very great opportunity for the CTA to work with the Treatment Not Trauma campaign to, uh, respond to the type of crises that are happening in the CTA instead of, uh, increasing private security, uh, increasing turnstiles, uh, criminalizing fare evasion, and wasting resources on police surveillance that doesn't really help community members and make anyone feel safe. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next public commenter is Nick Hunter.
Rather than make comments about a 24% reduction in service from pre-pandemic levels, I want to focus on a slightly lower cost improvement not currently allocated for in the proposed budget. First, first, I want to get this out there that I, like Brendan, I don't find that cutting schedules and calling into optimization is an improvement in service, when the average headway and percentage of consistent intervals on the service that is being run has not changed. The largest percentage of consistent intervals before the July 2023 and October 2023 cuts reached 80% on April 29th. In June, the CTA announced that a third post-pandemic service cut was to optimize schedules, but in the dates between the July 2023 and the October 2023 cuts, the highest consistent intervals topped out at 83% after another 3% cut in service compared to April 29. After those October cuts and another 3% reduction in service, that same figure has not exceeded 74%. In those time periods, headways over 30 minutes in a given week are up 88%, whether it be morning, afternoon, evening, or night. Commuters are experiencing a reduction in service with no improvement in consistent service, the goal of these optimizing schedules. In the executive summary, quote, "100 flaggers have been trained and transitioned into rail operators in 2023," close quote. At the end of August, that number was only 40, as announced in a CTA press release. The CTA provided data that shows by attrition, the CTA has not managed to increase rail operator headcount in the past 12 months. This version of the 2024 budget shows no real plan to increase service by increasing the amount of rail scheduled transit operations or to combat attrition. How can commuters expect service to improve when there are no public actions being taken? If we're to remain at a 24% service cut, the least that can be done is to even out the schedules. A patch this isn't to hire workers to make up for the 24% in service cuts, but to reverse the decline in rail operator headcount and obtain a sustainable level to ensure the trains come at consistent intervals. If service is consistent, people can plan on it, no matter how bad the headways are. Everyone who came here tonight truly cares about the CTA and wants to use it as a reliable way to commute, but you all make it incredibly hard every day of the week. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next public commentator is Morgan Madderden.
Hello again. My name is Morgan Madderden, and I'm an organizer with commuters take action, and I work for the city as a transportation planner. I just want to say again, it's unfortunate this meeting was 15 minutes late, wasted 15 minutes of the public's time, um, because members were stuck in traffic. It's ironic, at a meeting on a transit budget, this is still happening. I'm not sure how many block club articles have to come out before we see members take the system itself. Um, if you are stuck on a bus in traffic, I feel for you. That happens to me on the 49 bus all the time. I think it's just another testament that we should be investing in bus rapid transit and bus priority signals. We are all here because we believe in public transit. Public transportation is a public good, a utility. Public transportation is like the library, or the post office, or schools. It's a public service that we provide in order to support the most vulnerable among us and in order for our society to function and for our city to thrive. and in order for our society to function and for our city to thrive. It's been over a year since the meeting, the moment has come out, and the meeting has not been met. Using CTA's own publicly provided data, we can see that the number of vacant training operator positions has changed very little over the past year. An increase in train operators has not happened. The budget being proposed today allocates funding for the same number of operators in twenty-nineteen, but provides absolutely no plan on how enough train operators will be hired, trained, and retained to meet that number. The CTA has used the excuse of the pandemic long enough. Other transit agencies who once made cuts have restored and even increased service now. Other industries who face pandemic hiring issues have since resolved that issue. CTA alone has been unable to restore service and increase operators. We keep hearing that the CTA is trying, but is suffering due to post-pandemic hiring. Even if the latter was true, the current method being attempted has provided no progress in the past year, and clearly new policies are needed. If the current president cannot provide a plan to increase operator numbers, especially in CTA's most public-facing document, the twenty-twenty-four budget, the new, the new leadership is needed. Progress in housing and transportation planning is being held up by the refusal to admit there's a problem and by refusing to admit that this problem is within the CTA president and board's control to fix. We cannot build dense transit-oriented housing without a functioning transit system. Every day that the CTA performs poorly, our city becomes more reliant on cars. We cannot build a safer city for pedestrians and cyclists without a functioning transit system. As more and more people call for cities that work as urban environments are supposed to, for pedestrians, cyclists, and transit users, and for cities that are resilient in the face of climate change, we must step up and provide the level of transit service that cities around the world have been doing for decades. The time to wait and see is over. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public commenter is Austin Bush.
Hi. Thank you for your time. As I'm waiting for the CTA for a train that doesn't come more than once every twenty minutes in the cold, I sometimes value whether the CTA, wonder whether the CTA values my time, and it's nice to know that it does tonight. I want to speak about the systems priorities, how the board should be compensated in a way that will improve these priorities and advocate for breadth of solutions to the personnel crisis. The CTA has done a great job recently of reducing crime on trains and increasing efficiency per passenger mile. Unfortunately, this is because they've cut service in the face of higher ridership unnecessarily packing trains and buses. We don't need you to move the goalposts. We need you to move passengers. Stop comparing the system to pre-pandemic ridership and just shrugging it off. Chicago isn't the only place dealing with this issue. Judge CTA in comparison to its peers to reflect the reality of the new normal. Rarely would I look to Washington DC for a model of competency, but hey, the WMATA was regularly, literally on fire for the years before the pandemic, and they're currently running more service than ever before. It's high time to stop worrying about whether passengers are working downtown again and start worrying why the CTA can't get more drivers and operators to work. Since we don't have a fixed contract with the organization's president, let's condition the pay to real metrics. Given that staffing is the biggest challenge right now, incentivize the chief, chief executive of the organization to fix it by conditioning a significant percentage of their pay on the appropriate level of service targets. Doc pay for officials who refuse to show up to city council to explain themselves. In addition, condition staff and board member pay on whether they utilize the system they oversee so they have firsthand experience with the infrastructure that they may neglect to fix. The chatbot further isolates system staff from riders, and it needs to be balanced with regular staff ridership. Now, if proper staffing is truly impossible for the CTA to manage, there are several infrastructure priorities that may soften that blow in the meanwhile and should be immediately deployed. Doing so with the, would require the cooperation of the city council, and unfortunately, blowing them off ensures a failure on behalf of the passengers. Number one, expedite bus lanes and signal priority. A ten percent speed boost of a bus is a ten percent capacity upgrade, and the passengers will get to their destinations faster. Number two, reduce slow zones. Again, ten percent speed boost, ten percent capacity boost. Short torn more routes. Look at turning around at Jefferson Park or on, at Western on the Brown Line. Look at running more express buses on Ashland and Western. Look at segmenting routes into multiple routes so that they are not stuck behind isolated incidents and can better adjust to ridership. And finally, consider off-peak pricing. If the service isn't there, why would people pay for it? These priorities will do more to advance the sustainability targets of the CTA than the budgeted initiatives that you have so far. We have an electrified rail system that we are underutilizing, and our buses are shamelessly stuck in general traffic. If ridership ships to Uber after years of poor service, it will be a net loss in energy efficiency for the entire city. Please do what needs to be done to retain and onboard new operators with the speed and gusto of a passenger running up the stairs to catch the only train coming for the next thirty minutes. Show riders that you care about fixing the problem but not gaslighting them. Chicago is not a car city, and I want it to stay that way. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last online registrant, Courtney Cobb.
Hi, my name is Courtney Cobb. I'm a resident of Rogers Park. I lived in Chicago for ten years. I moved to Chicago because I wanted to live without a car. I lived less than five miles from the community college that I attended, and it would have taken me over an hour to get there. Sadly, I have faced the same thing in Chicago when I was without my bike. It took me an hour to travel three and a half miles to get home. That same trip is twenty miles on my bike. The speed of the average CTA bus is ten miles per hour. You can travel twice as fast on an electric divvy, and I find that unacceptable. I have to add thirty, forty-five minutes into every CTA trip that I take because I know the bus is going to be stuck in traffic. The technology to speed up our buses is not elusive. Transit signal priority has been a thing in other cities, and other cities are laughing us. Freaking Los Angeles, the city of cars, is speeding up their buses faster than we are. We need to do more to hire more bus operators, and we need to do more to speed up our buses because people who have a choice in how they get around, they are going to choose to take Uber, Lyft, and drive because I see it every single time I take the CTA. Twenty minutes for the next bus? People have their phones out calling Uber and Lyft because some people have a choice and other people do not. And the people who don't have a choice, I am angry for them, on behalf of them because no one on a bus should have to sit in traffic when you have people in these freaking SUVs with eight empty seats, and you got a bus full of people just sitting in traffic. And that is unacceptable. It should be unacceptable to you, and our budget should reflect that.
Thank you. We will now transition to our in-person speakers who signed up this evening. Joseph Mikelski.
Most of the stuff was kind of addressed already by other people, but I noticed by reading the budget, the TSP, the traffic signal priority, especially on Western Avenue, I noted today that the documentation says that was already implemented. And as other people are saying, the Western buses, like the forty-nine, pretty often we are just kind of stalled in traffic. So I think that that should definitely be implemented more, the traffic signal priority, so the buses can move through, and we don't have all of those fast issues like my last ten people are just talking about issues with fast service. So it's kind of, and like the CTA is already saying, we've already addressed this for Western and Ashland Avenue, but I know personally from riding the Western forty-nine bus a lot, whether it's an express or a regular bus, it's, it's stuck in traffic pretty often, I'd say. I don't know like why it's not implemented as well as the J fourteen, for example, which has more bus lanes, and I feel like that service is more, you know, actually fast compared to like other service which says it has traffic signal priority according to the CTA documentation, but does not. Let's see what else I wrote here. I also noted in the documentation says security monitors are utilized in some stations like to allow, and like deter crime, like to allow people to see that everything's recorded. I've heard the bus announcement, everybody who's ridden the bus has probably heard it, you know, everything's monitored, blah, blah, blah. I don't know what train stations are talking about that have this technology in use because I have not seen them. I would like if, and maybe in future documentation, they could like point out what stations these are at so I could, as a curious person, go visit them because I have not utilized or seen this security monitor system. Even though I know there's cameras everywhere, like they're making it seem like it's like a pace bus plus where like you can see the monitor of the screen footage yourself as a rider. I have not seen that at any train station. That's the impression I got from documentation. The, and also the, the next topic, domestic violence of venture cards. I feel like it's a good concept, but I just would like to see some sort of reasoning for this, like why the budget is going to this. Have there been people with domestic violence requesting venture cards, and there's been an issue with this? I understand the need, if there is a need, like I can get behind it, but like as it stands right now, I have not heard of a single person with domestic violence saying that I need a venture card at CTA or Pace and I'm not being able to access it. I feel like that's kind of a pointless way to be spending the money, unless we can get some sort of, you know, people saying that they would benefit from, then I can completely get behind it. But, and then lastly, with all the stuff going on right now, this is probably not possible right now, but I believe that the forty-nine A Southwestern bus that was discontinued like ten years ago should be brought back because right now there's a Pace three forty-nine Southwestern bus. It's the only bus that serves on the southwestern portion, you know, until forty-nine CTA takes over. Unlike other writers, I actually have not experienced a lot of service issues with the CTA except for the Purple Line. Personally, the local Purple Line has been, I've experienced delays like the other commenter was saying. The Purple Line Express, I feel is fine, but anyways, I have not experienced much delays with the CTA rail or bus service. By the way, forty-nine A Southwestern should return some capacity when there's enough drivers to do it, even if it just goes to one hundred nineteenth Street and that's one hundred thirty-fifth where it used to go. It should go from one hundred nineteenth and Western Terminal to seventy-ninth and Western Terminal because there are a lot of times when people are stranded, especially at ninety-fifth Street, waiting for a three forty-nine Southwestern pace bus that never comes. It's gotten a little better in past weeks, but there's been a lot of issues there. They say it's their second most common written thing, you know, bus besides three fifty-two South Ballstead. But yet, sometimes, you know, those ghost buses, ghost buses that don't come, a lot of
Please wrap up your comments.
Buses that group together. So that's about everything.
Thank you. Next, Quentin Berkeley.
Greetings, board members, CTA. My question is that the red line project that y'all gonna be doing, I'm a little impressed in that, on press on it, it's just that I just want to know more information and how y'all gonna do the infrastructure of the red line project that y'all gonna expand, going from ninety-fifth all the way to a hundred and thirty-something. That's what I'm interested in and stuff. And another thing, I'm an airport employee. I work for United Grounds Express UGE. I've been riding the Blue Line all my life, born and raised in Chicago since nineteen seventy-seven. The Blue Line has its hiccups. The Blue Line has its ups and downs. And whenever I ride the Blue Line train, it always be filthy and nasty, and the homeless people always sleeps on it. I get tired of that. I'm an airport employee. I've been working there for five years and stuff. I'm glad that y'all not gonna raise the fare and stuff. That's fine, but the ninety-fifth red line, just that I don't see that McDonald's no more. Y'all either dismantle or none. Something has to change on that. If people coming from the south side, at least someone need to eat down there also too. That's what I'm saying. That's my opinion. And also, another thing is that I've been born and raised in Chicago all my life. CTA has to be fixed immediately. That's what I'm saying. Fix immediately because my family and my brothers and my aunt, we love riding the CTA, but just that the south side looks totally different to me. That's what I'm saying. Something has to be changed. And another thing, I've been going to all my events, sporting events at the Allstate Arena. Y'all always have that pace bus, the Allstate Arena pace bus, going from the Blue Line to going to the Allstate Arena and it goes straight back to the Blue Line. Y'all need to bring that back immediately. I shouldn't have to walk from a mile to the Allstate Arena coming from the Allstate Arena, then I had to wait on one of the pace buses going towards where that McDonald's is there also too. I just want the Allstate Arena bus back immediately ASAP. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next in-person commenter, commentator is Brian Kemper.
I want to mainly talk about the All Stations Accessibility Program. It was announced in July twenty eighteen. It said there were forty-two stations that were going to be upgraded with elevators by twenty thirty-eight. That's a twenty-year span, forty-two stations. That comes out to two-point-one stations per year. Currently, the CTA says there's funding for fourteen stations, five are under construction. The RPM accounts for four of those, but that was a six-year project from pre-stage to finishing. There are still going to be five red line stations and eight purple line stations remaining after phase one. Phase two hasn't been started at all. So that will be at least a decade to, to get red, and then probably another decade to get purple updated. The Montrose Blue Line Station was closed for five weeks in twenty sixteen to extend the platform, yet no elevator was added at that time. That would have been the perfect time to add the elevator, and the CTA was short-sighted and didn't think about doing that. State and Lake has been announced on October twelfth, twenty seventeen. It's now almost the end of twenty twenty-three, and still no construction has started. That's projected to be a three-year timeline, so that project will be a ten-year project. There's a lot of stations that the CTA still needs to upgrade, and you're not moving anywhere close to fast enough. Two-point-one stations per year, and not one has opened yet. The added security on the CTA is a joke. They stand in clumps, usually on the platforms, not on the trains, and they're almost always on their phones. What have they added besides a further deficit to the CTA's budget? Taking the L between downtown and home is a forty-five-minute trip for me. Has taken more than ninety minutes on multiple occasions due to service cuts and packed trains. This has led to me biking more and more into the office, trip that takes only thirty-six minutes. I simply cannot rely on the CTA to be frequent or on time. Take the CTA at least six times a week. How often does Dorval Carter take the CTA? Why hasn't someone who's been proven to not take their own buses and trains been fired yet? Get someone who can manage a transit agency and fire Dorval Carter now.
Our next public commenter, commentator is John Brockway.
My name is John Brockway, and I'm a customer service assistant working on the Pink Line. My comment is on the proposed wage increases of contracts with private security firms. I would like to make three points responding to that. I see these security guards abandoned train stations, only returning to take the last train home. I've spoken to these security guards directly about this, who've confirmed this is a known problem. I see security guards going to the most remote area of the platform in order to minimize any contact with customers. This is not security. Security guards need to be added eyes and ears for the CTA. They need to be reachable. If I see a conflict happening on my cameras, I'm unable to communicate with security unless I physically walk to the platform. I believe giving private securities, I believe giving private security and CTA radios will greatly enhance customer safety. To summarize, these private security firms need to be accountable for their performance and work, and work with the rest of CTA to take customer safety seriously. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next commentator is Ephraim Paderis.
Hi, good evening. My name's Ephraim Paderis. I'm a CTA writer, and I just want to make a comment. I, I have been assaulted on CTA twice, once last year in October and one last July, and these, these are in broad daylight, one at two o'clock in the afternoon, one at six AM. I would like to know, well, these people in, you added these people in high visibility vest jackets. They're not doing anything. They are a joke. They just stand in there looking at their phones all day. They cannot even tell a smoking person to stop smoking because they're afraid that of, of retribution or something. The crimes in the trains, if you could look at the The crimes in the trains, if you could look at the security cameras, they're selling drugs on the trains every day. That hasn't stopped. So I would like to know what kind of security. We can get from a, uh. From these added budgets, if these things uh, would not even, they can't even, they cannot even control them. Thank you.
Thank you. Noah Caldwell.
Hi, everybody. Uh, my name's Noah Caldwell. I moved here from North Carolina about six years ago because I wanted to live in a city where. Driving a car wasn't my only option. Um, I want to echo what everybody else here said already. Um, I've been pretty disappointed in the CTA service. Um, I want to look at Google Maps and see that trains and buses are going to take less time than driving. I want my friends to ta- say, let's take the train or the bus instead of an Uber every night. And largely the reason for this is because, see, people perceive the CTA to be unreliable and unsafe. And if Chicagoans think our mass transit's unsafe, then it's going to cause more traffic. It's going to cause more budget holes and it's just going to make the service even more dangerous. Um, I think the solution is just more service, like everyone here said. Uh, low headways reduce loitering on platforms and increase safety. Low headways increase safety by increasing ridership. And they induce demand, allowing for more money to come into the service to fund more service and make the trains and buses even better. Um, it seems like the answers to improving the service are pretty clear. Uh, more workers and better working conditions. It doesn't make sense that workers are forced to buy their own uniforms in the first year they work there. It doesn't make sense that we force workers to do lower paying jobs in customer service or as flaggers before they can drive. It doesn't make sense that we only have one operator on every train. Doesn't make sense that the CTA hasn't mentioned any of this in their budget this year. Um, my final comment, I lead a team of software developers and one of the biggest problems that we have in development. Is that the people responsible for that development don't regularly use our own product. And so, it doesn't make sense that the leader of the CTA doesn't regularly take his own service. And is likely the biggest impediment to making it better. Thank you.
Thank you. So that was our last pre-registered or onsite registered speaker for this evening. Is there anyone else in the room who wants to say something? Do you need, you can come forward. Hello.
Nice to meet you.
Can you please introduce yourself? Cause I don't know your name. Okay.
Um. I feel my, my main three points are. The, of, the, 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 the Western Avenue Station, which I hope gets underway soon with the construction. And the State and Wake Station, how one, I hope that doesn't take long to reconstruct and rebuild. Um, and I'm, I'm grateful that you do not have a fail increases. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Nice to meet you. On behalf of the Chicago Transit Authority, Transit Board and Management, many of whom are in the room this evening. Thank you so much for taking the time to come out and be an active participant in our citizenry. That concludes our public hearing for the twenty twenty-four budget. And please have safe journeys home.